And Chair Olson, go ahead and begin when you are ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular virtual meeting of the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. Today is Thursday, December 9th, 2021. My name is Alyssa Olson, and I'm the Vice President of the Planning Commission. This meeting includes the remote participation of board members and staff as authorized under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D dot zero two one, due to the declared local public health emergency. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public access and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll for quorum.
Commissioner Baxley.
Here.
Caprini. Esmiley.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Marwa. McGuire.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Schrader. Sweetsie.
Here.
Chair Olson.
Here.
There are seven members present.
All right, we have a quorum. Next, we'll proceed to the agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's Legislative Information Management System, which is available at limbs dot Minneapolis MN dot gov. Commissioners, could I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Commissioner Ford.
I move we adopt the, adopt the agenda as presented.
Commissioner Smiley.
Second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Caprini. Esmiley.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Marwa. McGuire.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweetsie.
Aye.
Chair Olson.
Aye.
There are seven ayes.
All right, the agenda is adopted. Next on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes from the meeting on November 18th, 2021. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes? Commissioner Esmiley.
So moved.
Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Marwa, second. I'm sorry, I'm calling into my phone, I'm just returning home from the meeting.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Caprini. Esmiley.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner McGuire.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweetsie.
Aye.
Chair Olson.
Aye.
There are eight ayes.
All right, that motion passes. We can move on to our discussion items. And our first item is a landmark designation study review and comment, six fourteen through six twenty-six, Ninth Street South. And staff is John Smalley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is John Smalley. Let me share my screen with you here. Can you all see this presentation?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Again, my name is John Smalley, and I'm pleased to be before you this evening to present the landmark designation study for six fourteen to six twenty-six, Ninth Street South, the Mayhew Row Houses. The subject building sits at the northwest corner of the intersection of Park Avenue and Ninth Street South. It straddles five tax parcels with four different owners, three of whom seek landmark designation, but all of whom consent to nomination. And all parcels share a common walls with landmark, with adjacent parcels. One of the tax parcels has two multifamily residences separated by a common wall. The subject building is the oldest contributing resource in the South Ninth Street Historic District, locally designated by the city of Minneapolis and deemed eligible for state and federal historic structures rehabilitation tax credits. The property owners are seeking landmark designation to become eligible for the waiver recently added to Heritage Preservation Regulations, Section 599 point one sixty. Title twenty-three, Chapter 599 point two sixty of the city's Code of Ordinances requires the planning director to submit all proposed designations to the Planning Commission for review and comment on the proposed designation. In its review, the City Planning Commission shall consider, but not be limited to, the following factors. Number one, the relationship of the proposed designation to the city's comprehensive plan. Number two, the effect of the proposed designation on the surrounding area. And number three, the consistency of the proposed designation with applicable development plans or development objectives adopted by the city council. In terms of the relationship of the proposed designation to the city's comprehensive plan, Policy sixty reads, intrinsic value of properties. Increase the awareness, understanding, and appreciation of the economic and intrinsic value of older properties important to the city's heritage. The Mayhew will be the city of Minneapolis's only individual local landmark designated, I'm sorry, designed by architect Frederick Clark, and the only individually designated row house to display this unique blend of Richardsonian-Romanesque and Queen Anne-style architecture. Local designation of the property will help increase the awareness, understating, and appreciation of its value and importance to the city's heritage. Policy ninety-three states stewarding historic properties. Preserve, maintain, and encourage the adaptive reuse of historic districts, landmarks, and historic resources, especially in locations that have experienced disinvestment. Individual designation as a local historic landmark will encourage the ongoing residential use of this property. By qualifying the property for the short-term rental dwelling unit waiver per Heritage Preservation Regulations, Section 599 point one sixty, local designation will allow the property to retain its current viable use as a combination of long-term and short-term rental apartments. In terms of the effect of the proposed designation on the surrounding area, as the property is already designated as part of the Ninth Street South Historic District, individual landmark designation will not have an impact on the surrounding area. Landmark designation will allow the property to continue its function in its current capacity as a combination of short-term and long-term rental units. In terms of the consistency of the proposed designation with applicable development plans or development objectives adopted by the city council, the proposed designation is consistent with the Elliott Park Neighborhood Master Plan. The designation will support the preservation of historic properties, thus preserving the neighborhood heritage, while also encouraging the adaptive reuse of these historic properties, helping to sustain a truly livable community. These being objectives one and two of the master plan. Applicants Chris De Laurentis and Lauren Anderson are here in the meeting as well if you have any questions for them or myself.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion or questions? Commissioner Esmiley.
Yeah, okay. I know Commissioner McGuire is in the queue.
Oops.
One quick question, actually. So does this mean that if, in the, does this have any impact on future renovations on these row houses that then there would have to be EAWs for every single one of those renovations?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Smiley, not, there would be no increased requirement beyond what there already is, since this property is part of a locally designated historic district and has been deemed eligible for federal and state historic preservation tax credits.
Thank you.
Commissioner McGuire.
Thank you. So in reading the case, it seemed like there was something about the waiver and like the short-term rental aspect of it. Is that, is the change to the code and the waiver the reason that they weren't able to apply before? And now they are able to apply for local designation? Am I understanding the connection between the short-term rental aspect and the designation correct? Or what's the, yeah, how do they intersect?
Madam Chair, Commissioner McGuire, the short-term rental waiver is only available to landmark properties, and these are typically individual properties, as opposed to historic districts, which this property currently lies within. Historic districts typically being multiple properties.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Meyer.
I was just gonna say, you know, sometimes I'm skeptical of historic designation because I feel sometimes it's abused as a way to prevent developments. But I think both this one and the next one, our agenda, have a lot of merit, and I agree with the staff recommendations for both of them. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments or discussion? I'll say that I agree with Commissioner Meyer. I'm hearing an echo of myself. But I agree, I think that this is definitely worthy of the designation. Commissioner Esmiley.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up question, just wondering if you have received any comments or that were contrary to staff recommendation, concerns, or anything? Because I agree with both Commissioner Olson and Meyer as well.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Smiley, no. Staff has received no public comments on this proposal.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Sometimes fewer comments means positive.
Thank you all.
Yep, thanks. All right. Number two on our agenda this evening is Fire Station number twenty-four, study, review, and comment. Forty-five oh one Hiawatha Avenue, and staff is Rob Skalecki.
Thank you, Chair Olson. Just give me one second here while I share. And good evening, Commissioners. I'm Rob Skalecki, City Planner in the Historic Preservation Section of CPED. It's great to be in front of you again this year to present another designation study for Planning Commission Comment and Review. This property is Fire Station number twenty-four, located at forty-five oh one Hiawatha Avenue. Staff is recommending that Fire Station number twenty-four be designated as a local historic landmark. Staff finds that the property exhibits sufficient historic integrity and relevance, relevant significance to be considered for local landmark designation under Criterion One and Two. The designation study states that the subject property was constructed in nineteen oh seven to serve as Fire Station number twenty-four. It was staffed exclusively by black firefighters between nineteen oh seven and nineteen twelve. Fire Chief Canterbury's decision to staff the station in this way was an attempt to evade existing civil rights laws and effectively segregate the Minneapolis Fire Department. Doing this led to a discriminatory work environment that characterized the department for decades to come, discouraged black employment, and resulted in an entirely white workforce by the late nineteen forties. The designation further details that the fire department's, further details that the fire department's practice of racial discrimination that began with the staffing of Fire Station twenty-four became a significant focus on the civil rights movement in the sixties and seventies. Thus, Fire Station twenty-four is significant under Criterion One due to its associations with practices of segregation and discrimination within the Minneapolis Fire Department and the limited opportunities for black employment. Under Criterion Two, the property is associated with the lives of significant persons and groups. As the only fire station in Minneapolis known to have exclusive, exclusively employed black firefighters at one time, Fire Station twenty-four is significant for, or its association with African, the African-American community at large, as well as several individuals. The property is significant under Criterion Two for its association to John W. Cheatham, Frank S. Harris, and James Rad Cannon. And I understand Planning Commission is familiar with John W. Cheatham from the Street Name Change Initiative from this past week. Other known black firefighters from Fire Station twenty-four are included in the study and are noted as Archie Van Spent, Archie Van Spence, and Oscar Clark. But the study detailed further research on their lives would be needed to determine the property eligible under Criterion Two for association to them. As my colleague John Smalley mentioned, and as you're probably well aware, at this time, the Minneapolis Code of Ordinance requests that planning directors shall submit all proposed designations to the City Planning Commission for review and comment on the proposed designation. And with that, you consider three points of the relationship of the proposed designation to the city's comprehensive plan, the effect of the proposed designation on the surrounding area, and the consistency of the proposed designation with the applicable development plans or objectives adopted by the council. The future land use for the property is identified as community mixed use. In Minneapolis twenty forty, community mixed use includes a range of competing uses and a range of allowed building types with mixed use, large-scale development encouraged. Currently, the area around Hiawatha Avenue in this location includes low and medium density residential with commercial and industrial uses. The proposed designation would have no impact on the use of the subject property and would support the identified future land use for the area. The future built form guidance for the properties identified as Transit ten in Minneapolis twenty forty and Transit ten, of course, is applied along high-frequency transit routes near metro stations and in neighborhoods adjacent to or in downtown. Buildings in Transit ten should reflect a variety of building types, and building heights should be between two and ten stories. The proposed designation, again, would have no impact on the built form for the subject property and supports the built form district for the area. While the subject building is on the lower end of the Transit ten building height scale, the building meets local criteria to warrant local landmark designation and preservation in its current form. The following policies of Minneapolis twenty forty apply to the designation of Fire Station number twenty-four. For Policy sixty, intrinsic value of properties. Fire Station number twenty-four is a significant property that is important in the city's heritage. Landmark designation would protect the building for years to come. Designation would also allow for the increased awareness, understanding, and appreciation of the intrinsic and potential economic value of an important piece of the city's cultural and social history. Under Policy ninety-two, for identifying and evaluate historic resources, sites of African-American history have been traditionally underrepresented in the body of the city's landmark properties. Designation of the subject property will aid in illuminating and interpreting a significant piece of African-American history in Minneapolis. The designation of Fire Station twenty-four will help to ensure that the history of segregation and discrimination in the city and the service and experience of Minneapolis' earliest black firefighters will be brought forward and known by Minneapolis residents for decades to come. And lastly, for policies under Policy ninety-three, stewarding historic properties, historic preservation regulations that come with historic designation would encourage the retention of this historic community resource. Local landmark designation ensures the protection of the significant piece of the city's history through consideration of changes to the property, through review processes and understanding, of course, the significance of the property's social and cultural history. And lastly, for the effect of the proposed designation on the surrounding area, the designation will, again, help preserve an important remnant of the history of African-American public service in Minneapolis. It's a building that's been part of this community for over a hundred and ten years. Potential reuse, rehabilitation, interpretation of the property has the opportunity to foster the growth of an important community resource within the Hiawatha neighborhood. The property is also part of the Forty-Sixth Street Light Rail Station, pedestrian-oriented overlay district, and is in compliance with zoning regulations for this district. As a designated landmark, the property will remain a significant historic feature along Hiawatha Avenue. And the building does exist adjacent to the Metro Blue Line Forty-Sixth Street Station. With that, I'll be happy to take any of your comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Esmiley.
Thank you. I have two pretty quick questions. One is a similar question of whether you've received any comments, because I didn't see one in the packet. And then the other thing is, and I apologize if somehow I missed it, if you can talk about whether that designation means anything regarding like the current, current status of, as in, not status, current situation of this building in terms of signage and awning and things like that, if any of those would change moving forward.
Sure, thanks, Commissioner Smiley. To your first question, we haven't received any comments specific to tonight. This is a, it's a pretty well-known designation in a lot of the communities. So I think there's been, you know, newspaper articles written about this story, at least the history of the site. So we have had, you know, public comments here and there come in to us in passing, but nothing specific to tonight. And for your second question, as far as changes that are proposed to the building, I understand that the current property owner might, in the future, you know, hope to rehabilitate it to an appearance closer to what it had originally looked like. The current property has actually recently submitted a certificate of no change application, which is our administrative application for reviewing changes to the building to start with just minor rehabilitation work. So, you know, as far as signs and awnings at the property, that would, of course, be reviewed through preservation applications. But seeing as there are signs currently there, there are some, you know, there's some flexibility with how we review that, depending on what comes in.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions? All right, well, I guess I'll say the lack of opposition is probably support. All right. Yes, thank you. Up next, we have two fifty Fremont Avenue North, and staff is Hillary DeVore.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna bring up the presentation. For the materials that you were sent, I've modified this just a little bit. Just so I'm hopefully gonna reduce the amount of issues I have with power points or Adobe during these meetings. So this is a project at two fifty Fremont Avenue North. It's a six-story residential building with three hundred and sixty-four dwelling units. The site is currently zoned C two, and it's also located in the pedestrian-oriented overlay district. A portion of the site is located on the, in the Shoreland Overlay District, and then the built form, Transit fifteen, built form overlay district. This is located in the fifth ward and in the Harrison neighborhood of Minneapolis. The site is located on the northeast corner of Second Avenue North and Fremont Avenue North. And the, so the site is located one parcel south of Glenwood Avenue, which is a designated goods and services corridor. The site has several small commercial buildings on it that would be demolished. The site has been used for a handful of different contracting businesses over the years. Just to show you an aerial view of the site. Here you can see the building superimposed, so you get a better idea of the fabric of the neighborhood. And this is an image that was not in your packets. We had requested an additional image so you could see the rendering of the building from Second Avenue. So I will just pause here because this is new for all of you. But the applicant is proposing to construct a six-story residential building with three hundred and sixty-four dwelling units. There would be a total of one hundred and fifty-six enclosed parking spaces, and access to that parking is located on the northeast corner. And here is a rendering of that showing the access into that underground garage along Fremont Avenue North. The principal entrances to the building, there are three, but this is the principal entrance. It's located on the southwest corner of the site. And then there are two other entrances, in addition to all of the individual dwelling unit entrances that you can see on the, on the south and east and west sides. But then, the additional entrances into the building, this is a primary entrance for residents, and then there is also a primary entrance for residents on the southeast corner of the building. They have amenity deck space on the second level of the building. They have amenity space located on the second floor of the building, and there are also amenity spaces scattered throughout the building. If you look through the floor plans, you could see those. They're located on the second, third, and fourth floors of the building. And again, because the site is located in the Shoreland Overlay District, maximum height is limited to two and a half stories or thirty-five feet. In the built form, Transit fifteen Overlay District, the minimum height is four stories, and the maximum height is fifteen stories. The building is proposed to be six stories or eighty-three feet to the highest point. Conditional use permit will be required to increase the height of the building. In the pedestrian-oriented overlay district, I'm sorry if I'm getting you all dizzy while I do this. Buildings are required to locate within eight feet of a front, which is, in this case, is Second Avenue North and also corner side yards, which is Fremont, a portion of the building. You can see that the building jogs back here. Portions of this building are located more than eight feet, and so a variance of the PO overlay will be required. The project will be required to do a major travel demand management plan. They will need to achieve six points worth of the strategies contained in the zoning code, and more information will be brought forward once that document is available. Items that are not in the plans that I could not verify, but I am just calling out for the commission, but also specifically for the applicant, things that we will need to discuss in the future. Bicycle parking is required. It's a one-to-one ratio, so one space per dwelling unit. So they will need to provide three hundred and sixty-four dwelling units. Ninety percent of those are required to be, to meet the standards for long-term parking. So these are some things that I still, still need to work out with the applicants. Two small or one large loading space is required. And then site plan review is also required, not something we need to discuss. The exterior building materials that are proposed include brick veneer and then five colors of metal and aluminum storefront and glass. I'm just gonna get to the elevations. The development team has met with Public Works, and I attended that meeting with Surface Waters and Sewers. There is concern about flooding in this location. And this is outside of the Shoreland Overlay District. This is just what the city has noted and what the DNR has noted. And so, as a result of that, the building has been elevated higher out of the ground than what we would normally see or like to see, I should say. But there are reasons and justifications for why the building is elevated out of the ground. So I wanted to just bring that up during the presentation. So to summarize that, the applications that are required are a conditional use permit to increase height in the Shoreland, a variance of the PO to allow that portion of the building to be set back more than eight feet along Second, the travel demand management plan, and then site plan review. For future land use guidance, the site is located in a community mixed-use designation. Again, this is an all-residential building. There is no commercial space proposed in the building. Since the site is not located on the goods and services corridor, being Glenwood Avenue in this location, staff is supportive of an all-residential building, but would like your feedback on that. For the Transit fifteen, as I've already noted, where the site's also in the Shoreland, so we have a maximum height of two and a half stories, thirty-five feet. Transit fifteen says between four and fifteen, and they're proposing six. Stories are eighty-three feet. So the questions, one being the all-residential building in the community mixed-use district, two, the material selection and number and distribution of colors proposed. And then the third question or area that we're looking for feedback on is the way that the building interacts with the public realm in the PO district. So knowing that the building needs to be elevated higher than what we typically would for flood purposes, are there suggestions or creative ways that you could provide to the applicants to make the bill? Are there suggestions or creative ways that you could provide to the applicants to make the building feel more pedestrian-friendly at that ground level? So I will pause here and wait for any questions, and the applicants are all on the line. Thank you.
Hillary, could you tell us sort of the reasoning for why staff is supportive of all-residential? Oh, you're muted.
Hillary, sorry, I just muted you because I was hearing some echo.
Sorry, I unmuted myself. Because the site is not located on Glenwood Avenue or on a goods and services corridor, we felt that was okay. In addition, the site is already zoned commercial, so it does not, it's not seeking a rezoning to allow the project to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Meyer.
Did Commissioner, is Smiley go already?
That was from previous.
Oh, sorry. So I don't have any comment on the building materials or any helpful suggestions on how to make it more pedestrian-friendly. I, I do, I do think the pedestrian guidelines, I mean, are interesting. I, you know, requested after the last meeting to get an email about why it is that we push for certain things. Because in, you know, in pedestrian-oriented areas, we require you had to build up right to the front. And sometimes that was counterintuitive to me because there were times in both Dinkie Town and Prospect Park where there were projects where I thought having a plaza would be more pedestrian-friendly. But I, I think that you, you could kind of make the case either way on that, and I don't have a, a strong opinion in, in regard to this one. I do support allowing just single-use residential, and I think there are a couple of issues or factors that would support that in this particular case. One is, you know, the, I, I'm not sure that the timing of when the zoning was designated, but you know, people thought that the light rail would be coming to this neighborhood, and it isn't. So that might be a relevant factor to give flexibility. And then I think just more broadly for the country and the world as a whole, going through the pandemic, you know, there might be less demand for commercial space than there was previously. So I think if there's room to give flexibility on that, I, I think it makes sense to do that. Thanks. That's all for me.
All right. I'm not seeing any more questions right now, so if the applicant team would like to present, you can do that now.
I will stop sharing my screen.
Thank you, Hillary, and thank you, commissioners. My name's Mike Munson. I'm the Development Director with Maven Real Estate Partners. We're the developer and the applicant proposing the 250 Fremont project. We are incredibly excited about this project in taking a completely underutilized dirt storage lot essentially and transforming it into housing for hundreds of families. And we believe this project will bring a lot of activity, density, and population into this area. And we look forward to hearing your input and feedback. Thanks again for your time, and I'll hand it over to Jeff Gears with PDH on our architectural team.
Thanks, Mike. Commissioners, thank you. Hillary and everyone else in the city, thanks so much for your time and energy thus far. We've certainly had a lot of coordination, and we're very appreciative of all that. So I just wanted to give a little history, a little bit more insight on the building. Hillary did a great job of presenting it. I just wanted to, you know, kind of share a little bit of the insight. It is a, as we talked about, a six-level building, 375,000 square feet, approximately 364 units. One of the things we talked about is that the building does elevate above the, the street level at Second Avenue. And the reason for that is there is a hundred-year flood plan that is at an elevation of 810.9. So we're proposing that the floor elevation be at 814. And that's essentially the timeout with the elevation of the site on the north side of the building. So there's about a five-foot grade change between that. And as Hillary mentioned, we're, we're absolutely open to trying to come up to create solutions to connect the building to the street. And then in terms of materiality, we are, we are suggesting that there is a large portion of the building is metal panel. And at this point, our intent is that it would be a, the majority of it would be neutral grays and earth tones with some accent colors, and some of those colors are still in, in conversation. So we're still looking at some of those options. But above and beyond, I think it's just, you know, what our goal has been working with Mike and the others at Maven is that we really want to create a building that is both elegant and sophisticated, that, but also is bold and creates a statement. We feel like this is a great neighborhood to create a piece of architecture that really stands out, and we want to enhance the community. But we certainly do not want to have conflicts with the surrounding neighbors. So we're, we're excited to be part of the process, and we certainly thank you for your time tonight.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, comments or discussion, questions? I'll start. I'm not seeing anything. So I'm, I'm fine with all-residential. And then I'm looking at the rendering from the first page where we're seeing the walkout units where it's set back a little farther. I, I mean, I don't mind that it's set back because it is the walkout units, but the area above the doors feels like a weird blank space. So just thought I'd, I'd give that comment. Okay, I'm seeing Commissioner McGuire.
I agree, Commissioner Olson. I thought that area above the like walkouts was a little odd, maybe. I don't really have a strong thought about building materials or colors. I think that's very subjective. I'm fine with the all-residential use as well. And just, yeah, maybe create some, I'm trying to think of creative ways to make it like a more walkable, like pedestrian-friendly environment. If staff could pull back up that picture we hadn't seen before, just while we're talking, I think that might be helpful because I kind of already forgot what it looked like. So if staff could pull that back up, I would really appreciate it. Those are all my comments. Thank you. Oh, yeah, this one. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Commissioner Ford.
I just wanted to comment, thank you, that I support to the all-residential proposal. I am familiar with the site and the neighborhood, and frankly, but I think if we would have required commercials, it would sit there vacant in this particular site. I think residential is totally appropriate. Thank you.
Commissioner Baxley.
Yeah, I think I'm agreeing with my fellow commissioners on, on the residential, all-residential. On the pedestrian-friendly, it's, it is a challenge. I mean, both making it accessible with the height range with ramps and stairs. So it's, I, I sort of feel the architect's sort of wrestling with that. That's a toughie. But I think when you think about these as porches really, and there's great precedent around porch engagement with sidewalk, which involves a little bit of cover, so we get a little shadow relief on that south facade would be nice. Even some protection over those stairs, which will, you know, in the wintertime be interesting. And I don't know if the, if turning them all sideways maybe is, is the greatest thing. I think sort of, that's got such great south exposure. I probably want to sit in those stairs and kind of talk to the folks coming by. And maybe that orientation is a little bit more regular, and facing south might be something to explore, I think would be great. But really getting a little, a little porch relief. So I want to be, it's south-facing, but a little bit of cover would be nice. Some green things can happen. People can hang some plants. I think a little, one more layer there would be, would be really appropriate. And on that corner, it's just a lot going on there for sure. We've got the corner stair, the ramp coming up. I think that's going to be a beautiful space for the, for the project there in the corner. I just wonder if maybe the stairs at the corner isn't the best solution, that maybe they back off. The corner itself becomes prominent, and it sort of simplifies itself a little bit. But I am curious on, I mean, I like, actually like this elevation, the, the way the building starts to kind of step down a little bit. But if you could talk about the, the logic around the coloring, is it simply painterly? It's very patchwork now, and I know you're probably struggling with the mass of the building and trying to figure out how to sort of play with that. But just be interested on your thought process in terms of that application of color.
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that. You know, we've been looking at this idea of, I think this kind of idea of a gradient color scheme. This is a very large building, it's a very large mass. And I think what we were concerned about is getting lost in the details of getting, you know, some, some applique of color and materials that were at a smaller scale. So we wanted to have something that was kind of more monolithic in, in look, but in doing so also have opportunities for pops of color. And I think as, as, you know, mentioned earlier, those colors are still being explored a little bit. You know, the idea is it's metal panel, that we have some opportunities. We, we don't want it to be too busy. If, we just thought that at this size and scale, a lot could happen if we started getting too, too much. I mean, and, and, but at the same time, if we don't break it down into more manageable pieces, again, it is monolithic, and we don't want it just to be one mass wall of color. I think that would be, that'd be just a lot. So we're, we're exploring that. And that's, that was the intent, was to have kind of a gradient ombre effect going across the building. Did that, does that answer the, your, your question?
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I think to the application, that is, is very subjective. I'm, I'm always interested in, in how one approaches assigning that. I think trying to break it down is, is good, and I think I would say I would, I would keep studying it. I think it's not quite there yet. But
Yep.
Yeah. And I, and I think, so I think that's all I have to say. I think that south side is, is, could be really powerful. And I think thinking of it both as individual porch and a grand porch to the community might be a nice way to really make a gesture towards the street in a really powerful way. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marwa.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I had a quick question on the pedestrian scale. Is that amenity the first floor, so it's elevated for residents? Is that correct, if I'm, if I'm doing these floor plans correctly?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? I, I lost you for a second.
The, the amenity deck that's in our packet, is that raised? Is that kind of on the first or your second floor, if you will?
Correct. Yes, that, that would be on the second level. So it's one level above street level?
Yeah, I also kind of feel like there's, you know, the massing feels very heavy on this site with some way to kind of maybe do some outcrops that there's seating area on the ground floor as well. I'm fine with the no commercial space also, but I do think kind of that, you know, making, or something with landscaper or something on that side to make it feel, especially where those townhomes are, where they line the site. And then you're on the street. So maybe obviously in renderings, I know all the green that's, could be built in. But maybe if there's something that could be done there, I think might not feel like they're right on the sidewalk in the street almost. Make it a little bit nicer for the pedestrians coming through also, or for the people who live in the building, because it's going to be a very big building. The other thing I was going to mention is we had seen a project somewhere, on a similar site from here, that was right next to the LaDonia Brewery six months ago, a year ago. And they were working with them around kind of, you know, a look and a brand. They've worked, worked to really kind of brand that area with a very cool vibe and a very interesting perspective that brings a lot of people. I feel like the kind of color power using feels a little generic. I feel like you have a really cool neighbor that I would suggest reaching out to. And maybe they have, you know, top designers that work for LaDonia who've done their branding. I mean, they're going to be working with the Modular Housing Project also. I mean, I think there's an idea here that this, all this kind of neighborhood could have a really cool visual representation and brand and kind of feel a connection to that community that I feel like the project's a little bit missing. I'm happy to elaborate more on that, but does that make sense? Does that kind of, does that, are you understanding what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I certainly appreciate the insight. Yeah, I think that's, our goal, like I said, is, at this point, we, we're still exploring kind of the color palette and how we, how it wraps around the building. And I think to that point is how do we incorporate with the neighborhood as much as possible and still create its own unique identity?
So I would just workshop it with them. I mean, you have some really creative people who really branded that area, something that people want to live there. I mean, right, you're building a project because those cool breweries exist in the tasting rooms, and, you know, they've kind of came, a little bit came first. So, okay, they've made this area kind of cool. How can we, you know, I would, you know, contract with them, kind of have that influence. Also be like, we want to be the people that go to your brewery. How do we, you know, work together and kind of, we can create a, a little bit more synergy? I would just, because I love their brand. I know everyone in the city does. It's very unique. It has a, a very cool representation. I think we're, you know, just reaching out even, I know that's what the Modular Housing Group was, was doing too. And I think you'll have a really good community connection that way too, with that. And, you know, have a focus group of people, have them workshop it. And I think building community connections to me is so important, especially a project this size and the scale, that would, they would be a great partner to, to look at. Thank you. Oh, and my last comment was on your, on your packet, when you have your inspiration. There was like the, you kind of had an inspiration page. I really actually liked one of your renderings. I'm not sure if this is a project here, but it was the first one in your packet that's kind of with the orange cutouts with the building. That one. I haven't seen it.
The, the, the one on the top left?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. So that was kind of when we started looking at this again, thinking about creating something that's sophisticated and elegant, but also has some bold pops of color. That's actually a project in Los Angeles. And so one of the things that we're thinking about is, is there an opportunity to bring some design elements that were, that are being built in some other communities and how we can bring that kind of energy to, to the Twin Cities? And certainly, yeah, we're, we're working on some of that as we continue the design process.
Yeah. Personally, I think that top left picture or even the top right on the second one are much more interesting.
Here.
Come here for a second.
There's the one that I can see the Minneapolis logo, that kind of setting that we've seen a thousand times here that I'm excited by. But thank you. I like your, I like that you would put those concept drawings.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Sweets.
Thank you. Just to add a couple of things, I, I also am fine with the residential only in this location. It's a part of the city where it's great to see residential buildings going in. There aren't a lot over there, so I think that that's, I like that. I am not an architect, but the words monolithic and massive do seem apt to me. It, it seems very, very big in a way that I think that the fact that one side has to be higher because of that flood concern actually works to your benefit, probably aesthetically. But I think it looks absolutely huge. And the long row of townhomes, I mean, maybe that's a place to do some differentiation that would help at the pedestrian level. I mean, it just looks a little bit endless to me, like some of the, some of the condo buildings downtown, kind of the 10, 15-year-old ones that are just one block of walking in front of, in front of places. So I think that that's a challenge. While some of this stuff is subjective with color and, and that other thing, to me, it just looks like kind of striped in, in certain areas. I personally am not a fan of blue on the outside of, I can't think of an example in the city where I've seen one where it works. But that's, again, very subjective. But I think, I think it, it just, it looks to me like, almost like big shipping containers kind of put together. And maybe there's, again, I'm not an architect, but I do, I do see the concerns around the size and all of that. And I think, again, like Commissioner Baxley said, I'm sure some of these things, and you mentioned, are being worked out. But for me right now, it's, it's like, it's, it's like it's too much and too big, would be. And I know that we can't, you know, you get to build the height of the building that you want. I'd personally rather see something smaller and taller. But that's, that's not for me to decide. But thanks. but that's, that's not for me to decide, but thanks.
All right, Commissioners, any other comments or questions? I'm not seeing any, so thank you for sharing your project with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, our next item is 528 Fourteenth Avenue Southeast, 535 Fifteenth Avenue Southeast, and staff is Peter Crandall.
Good evening, sorry. Going to put my microphone on here so it can be heard better. Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, all right, I am going to share a quick presentation here and then turn it over to the applicant, because I know that they had some updates that they wanted to show you as well. This project is called the Landmark Dinkytown, it is located on several parcels in the Dinkytown neighborhood that are currently occupied by several smaller multiple-family structures, sorry. The site is essentially a half-block made up of about seven or eight smaller parcels. Under 2040, the site is guided for community mixed-use, which the project we just looked at also shared that designation. The community mixed-use designation does allow for large-scale mixed-use developments, but it does call for publicly accessible either commercial or office spaces on the ground floor. The built form designation in this area is Transit 15. I cropped the map in such a way here is to show you that there's kind of a unique row of blocks in this part of Dinkytown that has the Transit 15 designation, while the remainder of the immediate area is guided for much lower-scale uses, either six stories or three stories, so this would be a prominent structure for the foreseeable future, based on the designation and the context. The site is currently zoned for the R5 Multiple Family District, so, again, that zoning designation would not allow for commercial uses. The applicant would need to rezone either to OR or C in order to allow for retail uses on the site, they are not seeking to rezone at this time, so they're not currently proposing any commercial uses in this location, so that's something to keep in mind. And then as far as the project metrics go, the applicant is proposing a new seventeen-story housing development, single-use residential with approximately 324 units, that would be approximately a thousand bedrooms, so up to five-bedroom configuration. This is a project that's marketed towards students due to its proximity to the university campus. For floor area ratio, the applicant would be seeking to take advantage of the floor area ratio premiums that are available in the Transit 15 for affordable housing production on-site, enclosed structured parking, and then the construction-type premium to bring their maximum FAR to 8.7 with a proposed FAR of 8.5. And then they would need a height premium in addition to go to seventeen stories above the maximum of 15 in the Transit 15 district. So a little bit more information about the context is contained in the graphics that the applicant provided, you can see that it's immediately adjacent to the University of Minnesota athletic facilities, there are several other large-scale residential projects in the vicinity. However, none really comes close to the, the proposed height of this project. And I'll just go to the ground floor, so in the Transit 15 district, there are required yards for residentially zoned parcels, so the applicant is proposing to comply with those yards. So there would be setbacks on all sides of the structure, 15 feet on the public street-facing sides, and then 20 feet on the rear yards, so they would not be seeking any variances to reduce those. They're proposing walk-up units along the front and rear, and then a lobby and leasing space at the corner of 15th Avenue Southeast and 6th Street Southeast, so that would be the most publicly accessible use on the site. And then also important to note that there is vehicle access proposed off of both 15th Avenue Southeast and 14th Avenue Southeast, and a loading access off of 15th Avenue Southeast as well. 15th Avenue Southeast is a designated goods and services corridor, it's also a transit corridor and a heavily-used bicycle corridor, so those are things to consider as well. And then as far as the proposal itself goes, again, that's a seventeen-story structure, this is a massing diagram that illustrates the ways in which the applicant is attempting to mitigate some of that height and bulk, given the context of much lower-scale uses, so they can go into this a little bit more, but we've, we've had a lot of discussions leading up to this meeting about the importance of articulating the mass, particularly given that it takes up an entire block face in this kind of medium-to-lower-scale residential context, and then trying to give the, the structure the appearance of perhaps, you know, multiple massing modules that could give, be given different architectural articulation. So this is their attempt to do that, this diagram kind of shows some of those larger moves that they're making in terms of adjusting the mass and trying to modulate the height to mitigate some of that impact on the neighboring context. Again, primarily a residential project, there's an amenity deck proposed on the fifteenth floor of one of the massing modules, and then some structured, structured parking both below grade and for the first two levels above grade. And then the applicant did provide some context renderings to show how the structure would be prominently visible from all directions in this case. So as far as required applications go, there are no required variances, and again, the applicant is not seeking to rezone the site, so the only identified application at this point would be the Site Plan Review Application. As far as feedback goes, you know, as you're noticing, the, the project itself is somewhat less developed than we often see, and has not yet moved in the direction of developing an exterior material architectural expression, so I think the applicant wanted to make sure that, based on staff feedback and commission feedback, that they're moving in the right direction as far as the tower massing and orientation goes, and then the ground floor strategy for distributing the uses and vehicle access, since this is a really kind of significant project and will be so much larger and taller than anything around it. So we're looking for feedback on that issue, and then general feedback on how the project might progress as far as design expression goes. So I will stop there and let the applicant take over here.
Thank you for the introduction, Peter. My name's Chase Powell, and I am a developer with Landmark Properties, we're a developer of purpose-built student housing projects all across the country. It's been our area of focus, we look for high-quality sites adjacent to universities in major cities specifically, as well as, we have some other areas of multifamily residential that we also pursue as well. This is a project we've been working on for quite some time now, and are very excited about, and excited to get feedback from you all with me today, I have our architecture team that is working on this, which is the BKV Group. You know, as Peter was touching on, high level, we're just over a thousand beds and right over 300 units, it's 308 units total. We have below-grade parking and above-grade parking, as Peter mentioned, however, all of our parking above grade is being wrapped by units, so you're not seeing the parking from a street view. We tried to orient the towers to essentially align with, you know, the context of some of the other buildings within the area, we tried to step our scale back where we could, adjacent to some of the smaller residential structures, and then also tried to vary our height, as Peter was alluding to, between 15 floors on one section of the building, going up to 17 floors on the other. We're taking advantage of some FAR bonuses specifically related to affordable housing, which will also increase the height premium in providing that on-site, as well as enclosing our structured parking, and this will obviously be non-combustible building type, so we're looking forward to hearing your feedback, and from there, I will let BKV Group take it over. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Chris Delkowicz, architect with BKV Group and partner, and we're excited about the opportunity on this project. We've, we've had multiple other projects in the Marcy Holmes neighborhood through the years, and we are excited to, to first meet with you, and, and then with the Marcy Holmes neighborhood next month to begin discussions and get their input on it as well overall, and we can take some of those lessons learned and incorporate that right into the design as we go, as you'll see as we walk through the, the updated package here. A couple of the, the areas to just point out as we're, as we're looking at it are the, that we're, we're really focused on creating a, a very high-level pedestrian experience, and creating active uses on all sides of this project, is, is something very important to us. And further, one of the other areas, as, as mentioned, that we were seeking as an all-residential project, that, that there, there kind of needs to just be an open question of, where does the end of the feeling of the commercial core of Dinkytown end? And as you can see on the, the south half of our block, that's all residential buildings at this point, and it, it seems as we start to move into the neighborhood, you know, that, that's where the, it becomes a blurred line. So that's where we, we believe it is more suited to be all-residential at this time.
Chris.
Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
No, just, why don't you go to the next slide, if you would, the one that precedes this?
Yeah, it advanced beyond.
Oh, okay, sorry, well, just as, as a part of looking at, at Sixth, Sixth Avenue and Fourteenth and Fifth, Fifteenth, based on some of the studies and, and neighborhood dialogue that we had, Sixth was a highly pedestrian residential street, our Marshall project developed, I think, some very successful townhouses with front yards and two-story inch, two-story units with flats above, and the concept of being able to take the ground floor plane of, of this project and develop it as two, two-story units, and especially along Sixth, and then bringing those around on Fourteenth, leaving Fifteenth for the non-housing functions, we also are proposing a through-block connector as a pedestrian greenway concept that would relate not only to our site, but to the future development to the south of us. So this is a detailed development of the concept of having row houses as the ground-floor streetscape connector on Sixth and Fourteenth, and then on the through-block connector as well. These would be two-story units articulated as ground-floor brownstone walk-ups, and then the, the basic massing, if you go to the next slide, excuse me, is to be able to not only have the first two floors be articulated as townhouses, but then in, as we move around the building to, to have, like at Fourteenth, the four-story townhouses and upper flats of the Marshall would, would be a, a, a definite building-size comparison, and at the streetscape, we've connected that across to, to our building, and stepped the upper floors back at that same roof level on the fourth floor to begin to get a, a street relationship. You know, obviously, the courtyards and the walk-ups to those townhouses that are on Sixth at the Marshall would carry through with a similar streetscape feeling. Then as we look at Fifteenth, which is much more of a, of a through corridor, and much more as a through-street connecting on through underneath the, the rail line and on to the neighborhoods to the north, this would be where we would have access plus our main two-story lobby, and, and, and have the, the central access for the students to the project. As we look at Sixth Street, as a cross-section, we've got similar five-story buildings to the north, but we have a courtyard recess that articulates the buildings and, and emphasizes about three-quarters of the block, the two-story townhouse base, it's either an open courtyard, or we're setting the building back four feet. Then as we look at the cross-section, looking the opposite direction, in the greenway connector between our development and a future development project, we, we would look at that as being a, at hopefully a complimentary thirty-foot, fifteen feet by us, fifteen feet by the next development, to create a real animated ground-floor greenway mid-block connector. And with that, I'd like to ask my partner Jonathan to talk a little bit about how the overall building develops from, from this streetscape.
Yeah, hi there, Jonathan Del Cambrey, BKV Group Partner. This massing diagram begins to show how we, we looked at articulating the block massing in response to the existing context with multiple courtyards and varying types of green spaces at different heights. By, by taking a block and pushing and pulling the building form in both the vertical and the horizontal directions, we're able to break up singular planes and express those as pedestrian experiences, and additionally, this, this really creates a 360-degree architectural expression of the building when viewed at different vantage points within the city and neighborhood. We'll flip on to the next one. The programmatic diagram here shows the varying floor plates, that we have the underground basement parking, and then all the way up to level seventeen. All the parking, as indicated earlier, is located underground, and then at levels one and two, which are then wrapped with active uses of either housing or building amenities. The, the activation of the housing at the street level, and on the southeast side, that shares a common green space with neighboring buildings. Amenity spaces are located at the ground level, as you can see in yellow, and adjacent, which is adjacent to the, the campus, and then on levels three and four, and at the roof terrace on level sixteen, and, and these indentions in the building are meant to provide some relief to the adjoining buildings that vary from four to five stories. Levels four through fifteen stack, and they have approximately 23 units per floor. And with this, we're able to create multiple corner expressions and articulations to to really break up the entire block of this mass. Level 16, the building steps back on the southern side, which expresses the amenity terrace and will take advantage of views of the city. And then finally, the building tops out at level 17 with an expression of a smaller U-shaped floor plate. Go on to the section, please, Chris. So the conceptual building section here shows the overall building height at approximately 190 feet. You can see that on the left side, there's a four-story podium expression, as Jack mentioned, which is on Fourth Avenue, Fourteenth Avenue Southeast, and this is in response to the scale of the Marshall. And then there's a two-story podium that is expressed on the remaining sides, which helps to activate courtyards in level three, which helps bring down the scale of the tower to a more pedestrian standpoint. And then you can see the parking levels on basement one and two, which are activated uses on all sides with housing and leasing, lobbying amenities. Go on to the next one, please, Chris. So as Jack mentioned, you know, we're still in the early planning processes of looking at the massing, but these architectural precedent images are case studies of how our building could appear. By showing stepping stepping of the massing forms that exhibit that are exhibited on our current concept, you can see that there's layering of materials which help give depth to the building facades. Strong muscular podiums in response to pedestrian experiences and street wall articulation, and then a variation of roof forms, which would give visual interest and a positive addition to the skyline. Then we can go through the floor plans here quickly. You can see here the basement level, which is all parking. The ground floor, as Jack indicated, is parking wrapped with townhouses and flats, lobby leasing and bike lounge, which is again carried up to level two. And then at this point on level three, we have our our tower component, which steps back on various sides to express either four-story or two-story podiums. And then you can see the courtyards there on the plan south and plan north that provide relief in the horizontal direction. And then starting at level four up through level 14, they're all floors that stack of residential units. Level 16 shows where we're stepping the tower back on the southeast side to express the amenity terrace, the amenities and provide some relief in the the vertical height of the building. And then finally, you have level 17, which helps to express a more refined, smaller U-shaped footprint of the building.
Well, with that, we appreciate this opportunity to share our design thinking and obviously, we're at the beginning of designing this very important project in the Dinkie Town area. And I think we're also looking forward very much to your thoughts and wisdom as we're looking to further develop our design. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Esmiley.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Thank you for the presentation. I have a few comments and questions. One is that, just to confirm, this, the Chateau building that's a couple of blocks away, it is higher than this building, right? I think that one is around 20 stories. If if I'm correct, I'm just like trying to put it in context.
It's it's close. We would have to confirm.
Yeah.
I think it is at 20.
Well, then, a couple of comments that I have, I would appreciate it if I know you were explaining the reason behind why this is all residential. If you can say that one more time, I think I missed that because kind of seeing where this building is located and the amount of activity that's going on on these few blocks. Every time I go there, it's always busy. People are walking around. It seems like such a missed opportunity to not use that ground floor for spaces that are not residential. So that's, if you can talk about that a little more, I would appreciate that. I don't personally have much comment about the exterior material. However, I would say I hope that it's something that's not too boring and like very generic. I know there isn't any kind of rendering necessarily that you haven't, like you're thinking about it still, but I do hope that it's something, especially seeing how tall this building is and how much it will stand out, that it would be something a little more thoughtful than a lot of the other projects that we see coming through. And and then I had one other comment. Oh. So then the other comment that I was gonna make is whether or not it's possible to have any kind of car sharing opportunity made available in this building. I know there are a few Zip Cars around in this area. But again, considering the number of units that are being added and how we are moving away from parking that is usually not the same number and knowing how, again, busy this area is contrary to what a lot of people think. Students do have cars, in fact, even though they live right by the campus. So it's if there if there are opportunities to either partner, make sure there's some kind of car sharing available or if if there's something that can be provided through the management itself, I think that would be a great opportunity again, because you're bringing in so many new units to this area and this this area is already. If you drive around, you see how many cars are constantly parked double and like basically completely blocking the street. So those are my comments. And then, yeah, that one question, if you can elaborate a little more about the why just residential.
Chase, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, sorry about that. I was on mute. So i- in relation to why is this just residential? It's, you know, we're conforming with the zoning that's in place. The zoning that's in place is R5 zoning and there's a T15 zoning on it as well, so which does not allow for any commercial use. So we're building this by right. However, what I would say as well, and we, you know, like I was mentioning when I opened up the presentation, we we develop projects in cities across the country from South Florida to Seattle. And, you know, one thing we always try to do is articulate the building in a manner that even if we do not have commercial space in, which would be this instance, you know, we're articulating it in a manner that gives it pedestrians feel on the street level. So we've tried to position some items like the lobby and leasing amenity lobby and leasing area on the first floor, which will feel like, you know, kind of a commercial space. We've also put a number of other things down there like our bike lounge as well, where, you know, students will be able to park their bikes, hopefully alleviate some traffic. We'll have, you know, a little bike repair facility within that as well to pump tires, etc. So you know, we try to do that with a scale in mind in some capacity. We're also going to have a plaza on the, as you can see, on that northeast corner leading up to the lobby and leasing area, which will be, you know, heavily landscaped, etc. So long and short of it is, we're conforming with the given zoning and we're staying within, you know, the confines of what we have. Now, I guess as it relates to the car sharing opportunity that you described before, I mean, it's something we would certainly be open to exploring. You know, as I mentioned before, you know, we're expecting to have stu- a number of these students have bikes as well, which will hopefully alleviate traffic. I know the city of Minneapolis, particularly in this area, has done a good job with dedicated bike lanes, etc. So we're hoping some of that will alleviate the car traffic and will hopefully push some students to have bikes as an alternate means as well.
To be additive to your comments, Chase, an additional piece that we discussed about the residential versus commercial use on the first floor was that really, the the true heart of Dinkie Town is about two blocks south of this. And as the the Marshall has the Target project, it really has a very active corner. And then as you begin to work your way towards Sixth, it becomes a much more pedestrian street. And even upon Fifth, where you have the the row of residential buildings, it really begins to separate it from the the under-construction Dinkie Town project, the McDonald's project that's underway, has a half-block row of buildings to really separate that retail core. And then further, just the Beerman complex to the to the east of this also is not having that commercial use. So we're feeling it's on the edge of that commercial area and we're feeling that we're probably just outside of it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Meyer.
To respond to President Esmiley's question, I was the president of the Chateau Co-op for four years. And there are different ways to measure the number of stories. But I think 20 is probably the best way to do it if you're going just from the sidewalk slash street level and including the mechanical floor on the very top. But 18 to 20 would be the height variation there. You know, I've been reflecting on what things are important to make a good pedestrian experience. I would say, you know, the the corner in front of Target, you know, which is in the Marshall building that you guys also did, is one of the most pedestrian-friendly places in the city. Like, you know, I work on election campaigns and on Election Day, that's my favorite place to go to try to reach the maximum number of people. And, you know, I think part of it is it's, you know, kind of quieter there. There's not high-frequency traffic going by. That's one part. Lots of foot traffic, lots of destinations nearby. And then the sidewalk was massively expanded for both that side of the street and the venue across the street. So, you know, a decade ago, it wasn't very pedestrian-friendly, but now it really is. I think also like the native plans helped that. So some of those things, I mean, I I think having broader sidewalks is is one of the the biggest things that can help. That might be outside our purview and more with public works, but if you can accommodate the space for that, that's helpful. I I think I just, you know, I alluded to this for the previous item. And I I just think it's really interesting that, you know, this project is just outside the pedestrian overlay. If it was in the pedestrian overlay, then we would require you to go up, to build up to eight feet from the property line. But because it's outside of that, then we're instead requiring the opposite and requiring you to have expanded yard space around there. And I I just think that's that's interesting. I I don't. I I think you could make the case that maybe having some trees around contributes to the pedestrian experience some, but I I think having broader sidewalks would be more important. So if I had to choose between those, I I would ask for that to be accommodated. I think having a walk-through mid-block, that was actually something I was I was going to ask if you had thought about that. I think that was really helpful at the Marshall to have that there. I I think that the one at the Marshall could be, could have been improved somewhat, like it's it's not obvious to a lot of people that they can walk through that. It feels like they're walking into a parking lot and don't know that they're going to be able to walk through to the other side. I don't really know how to fix that, but some way of making sure people know that they can go through would be helpful to that. But I I have a question about that and that is like, so you only have half of the block, so you would you be able to coordinate with the properties for the other half of the block to make it go through the the full length?
Well, we we do control 15 feet from fifth of the our setback, we've actually expanded to 20 feet. And so so that we can really establish, even if we're the only one to do this through-block walkway, that at 20 feet, we're able to have a nice wide curving sidewalk, some eight to 10-foot fenced-in terraces, walk-ups to the townhouses. And we also set those back, as you can see on the site plan. I I think it would really be a greenway kind of expression if the other development would be able to at least give us 10 or 15 feet on their side. Obviously, we also would not like to have it be, you know, the backside of a parking ramp or something. So so all we can really do is design this through-block walkway as an opportunity and then try and get half of it done. And and then rely on you and others to support the other half. So. But but we think it's really a part of breaking down the scale. I mean, we have a high-scale vertically, but at the streetscape, it's important to have a a personal scale and a feel that is, in our case, we're stressing the residential character of urban living.
Yeah, I mean, just to expand on Jack's comment a little bit, you know, we're we're certainly supportive of having the through-block walkway and, you know, we were trying to be proactive to allow for that access and break up these larger blocks. And, you know, we would just hope it would be reciprocated when the time comes where these other parcels may become redeveloped in the future.
Okay. I appreciate that you're looking ahead on that. I think it's something that's really important and really does help make it more pedestrian-friendly. So to the, you know, residential area of it, I mean, I I agree that this is kind of just outside the commercial, the nearest commercial ones to this would be kind of diagonal to it. The the commercial area is growing, but it's not to your parcel yet. Like it probably will get there, I'd be a few decades from now. So I mean, but you know, it might be worth thinking about that future and maybe you know, designing it in such a way that it could transition once the once it's grown to a level that the demand would be there. But I think for now, it's fine to stick with the residential character that I was designated with. For the materials, you know, I'm just remembering the Marshall needing to be renovated almost immediately after it was built because of some kind of problems with the materials that were used there. So just, you know, please avoid that. I think the most aesthetically pleasing building in the area, in my opinion, is is the venue. So that would be, you know, the example that I would point to as as a model of a place that I I think it's good to have a balance in between, you know, avoiding being monolithic and avoiding being too busy. And I thought that one met that pretty well. I think that was, I might have missed one, but if I think of it, I'll come back to it.
Commissioner Baxley.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Jack and Chris. I I I actually, I like the walk-ups around the bottom. I think that as part of this neighborhood is going to be terrific and sort of echo Councilmember Myers. I mean, it really providing for the opportunity for that through-block to happen. And I think taking that extra setback and we can certainly aid in that. I think that would be very powerful to have happen. I like the beginning exploration of finding sort of datums in the neighborhood to begin to register to that. I mean, mid-rises tend to be chunky and and I think starting to articulate that base versus the tower responding to different places around, not just the local neighborhood, but you could take those clues from a larger district and use those setback points to start articulating. It's a different way of connecting sectionally as opposed to just sort of shaping. It's a different way of connecting sectionally as opposed to just sort of shaping the form and extruding it vertically. But I think there's something to be said for, you know, making a good tower as well. So I think Councilmember Meyer said that also, that like, once we, if you have a great base, it really sort of talks to that pedestrian and then sort of focusing, when the towers come straight down to the ground and sort of appear as pure extrusions, is when they tend to get a bit oppressive. And I think you're starting to explore that, which is great. I think, you know, sometimes also helping, you know, where those amenities are placed, you know, and separations between base and top are nice places to kind of both introduce either a slightly higher floor-to-floor or a different articulation of glazing so it isn't consistently housing sort of patterns all the way up. Although I do say that amenity floor up top would probably be wonderful. The views will be spectacular from up there. So it'll be interesting to see how materials start to kind of articulate these various components. I will say, we began talking about this with other projects. I do hope that you guys have a robust, resilient strategy with this project, that it isn't just, that we're looking at rainwater capture, that we're looking at low-flow fixtures, that we're doing even pilot PVs. You know, you've got a student body here that is completely interested and and our planet needs that. So as you're doing it, it doesn't have to be, we're not looking for lead platinum, but looking for instances along the way where you are really trying to leverage repetition and scale to your advantage in terms of doing the right thing regarding materials and the planet. So I hope that you, as you further develop that, look for those opportunities and tell those stories. It'll help both the sort of buy-in and understanding of a project that has a big responsibility, not only visually, but to resources as well.
All right, we're gonna go back to Commissioner Meyer.
First, I just appreciate my promotion to councilmember. Thank you, Commissioner Baxley. Yeah, Commissioner Baxley reminded me of the last quick comment that I wanted to make. I feel like symmetry is more aesthetically pleasing than than variation. I mean, if you want to go with this very hit, variated hit level, then, you know, I'm not going to go against it. But I personally think you have more symmetry on it. That's all.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions? I will add that it's a little bit difficult for me to just look at the massing without looking at the exterior materials. So I would really like to see this come back to committee of the whole with exterior materials so that we could just take another quick look at it. But I did like the precedent images that you showed. So if it looked anything like those, I think we'd be good.
We would be happy to do that. I was gonna say, I think the purpose of tonight, we, you know, just want to get as much initial feedback as we could before we're really advancing design in a way where we're putting the building skin on. You know, we wanted to just get an understanding of if we were moving in the right direction and try to incorporate any feedback where we could. So we appreciate that and are definitely open to coming back for you all.
All right, great. Commissioner Marwa.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I just wanted to echo Commissioner Myers' thought about the cut-through or breezeway or whatever the technical architecture term is for that. It's about a pedestrian-packed building. I think something like that would be like, I don't mind the shape of the building. Like, how much of that block that would be taken through? It would be nice if there was maybe some pedestrian activity there.
All right, I'm not seeing any more comments or questions. So thank you for sharing your project with us. Have a good evening.
And thank you very much for all the insights. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Bye.
Bye.
All right. So that was our last item for the evening. Kimberly, are there any staff updates?
There are not. Did, I was in a call and kicked out of the meeting for a bit. Did you act on the zoning board of adjustment appointments?
We didn't. I don't see that on the agenda.
There was a revised agenda, but I believe.
Okay, I pulled it off Dropbox a little bit ago, but maybe it didn't make it there.
Let me go to limbs. Thank you, Commissioner Asmiley, for the quick link. I believe this was a late addition to the agenda. Number eight is appointments to the zoning board of adjustment. So these appointments are all reappointments. Looks like we have three seats. Adam Hutchins, seat four, is an existing commissioner for Ward five. Eric Johansson, existing commissioner for Ward 12. And Richard Sandberg, also an existing commissioner for Ward seven, are all being recommended for reappointment. The board of adjustments appointments are a little bit different than some of our other processes in that they first come to the planning commission and then go to the business committee at the city council. So I believe we are looking for an action to recommend these three reappointments for approval.
Okay. Commissioners, any discussion or would someone like to make a motion to recommend the three boarding, zoning board of adjustments candidates for reappointment? Commissioner Asmiley?
Yeah, I just have one quick comment when I was looking at that item. I guess that's just a wish or hope for future where there's like, you know, that explanation or that little bit that people are supposed to type in their application, that it would be more than, I'm a current commissioner, because that's really hard to say, well, I don't know, are you doing great or are you not? I have no idea. So just something for future, if they can be prompted to talk a little bit about themselves again. But otherwise, I would make a motion to, for the appointments as recommended.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner McGuire?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Hi, folks. I'll just mention, now that the zoning board of adjustment meeting has ended, I've taken over for Ken Daler as the clerk. So I'll call the roll. With that, Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Commissioner Caprini is absent. Commissioner Asmiley?
Aye.
Commissioner Ford has left for the evening. Commissioner Marwa?
Aye.
Commissioner McGuire?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader is not with us this evening. Commissioner Sweets?
Aye.
And Vice Charleston?
Aye.
Seven aces and zero nays. Thank you.
All right, that motion passes, and that was our last item, I think. Kimberly, are there any staff updates?
That was indeed our last item this time. No staff updates at this time. I am going to reach out to the five of you that I haven't heard from about the January third meeting. I will assume that I haven't heard, or if I haven't heard from you, that you're able to make it. But we are just at a quorum right now based on who I've heard from so far. And again, we knew it was a bit of a risk putting it that close to the holidays, so certainly if you have plans or something going on, we completely understand. So I will follow up if we won't have a quorum for that meeting, if we know going into it. We'll try to address that as quickly as we can because those public hearing notices go out tomorrow. So if I haven't heard from you and you know you're not going to be there, please send me an email if you could before the end of the day tomorrow. That would be great.
Kimberly. I'll be doing, I'm working remotely that week from Puerto Rico, but I'll plan to join, working remotely anyway.
And Commissioner Meyer, I, we're waiting for one more definitive word from the clerk's office about your question on attending that meeting, so I'll be in touch with you.
Okay, well, I don't know if this is my last meeting or not, though. It might be, in which case, it's been a pleasure and an honor to be on the planning commission. I hope, though, that I get to be on the January third one because the, on the website, you know, it says that the term ends December 31st, but the park board term doesn't end until the new one is sworn in, which will happen at the annual meeting, which starts at 5:00 PM on January 3rd. And the planning commission starts at 4:30 PM. So I do think it would make sense for me to be the NPRV appointee for that January third meeting, but I will wait on the clerk's decision on that.
Yes, we rely on their expertise for a number of things, that among them. So I will be in touch as soon as we hear from them.
Thank you, Commissioner Marwa. I'm gonna miss your insight on here. I really appreciated your comment, perspective, history with this, it's terrific. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxley.
All right. Commissioners, anything else before we adjourn? Okay, if not, and without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next planning commission meeting will maybe be on Monday, January 3rd, 2022. We have not chosen a date for our first COW meeting in the new year. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.